All right, sorry for the delay. I'd like to open the meeting with a call to order and the roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Dr. Beebe?
Present.
Dr. Beebe is present. Ms. Boffey?
Here.
Ms. Boffey is present. Ms. Bradford?
Here.
Ms. Bradford is present. Mr. Garvey?
Here.
Mr. Garvey is present. Mr. Guio? Mr. Guio is absent. Ms. Hill?
Present.
Ms. Hill is present. Mr. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Lee is present. Dr. Moranti?
Present.
Dr. Moranti is present. Ms. Orange Jones?
Present.
Ms. Orange Jones is present. Mr. Romer?
Here.
Mr. Romer is present. And Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Smith is present. You have a call.
Thank you. Before moving to the approval of the agenda, I do want to point out to everyone that I know everyone would like to speak about Common Core all the time. That's not really the topic on the agenda today. We have very specific legal issues that we have to deal with. However, we do not have a large number of comment cards, so I will give some grace and some latitude, but we'll remind you that we really need to try to stick to the agenda items, and I do appreciate you being here today. I'd like a motion for approval of the agenda. There's a motion and there's a second. Is there objection? Here, none, so agenda approved. First item, please.
The first item is item 3.1, consideration of Louisiana State Representatives, James Arms et al. versus State of Louisiana et al., 19th Judicial District Court, docket number 632-150, section 22.
Members, I'll give a bit of clarity on this item. I'll call it, in short, the lawsuit that was filed against Bessie regarding the APA by a group of legislators. This item was originally placed here because it was unclear as to who would be representing Bessie in that suit. That has since been clarified. The AG's office will be representing the Bessie Board on that suit, and therefore does not require approval of outside counsel on that item. I don't know, I certainly wouldn't entertain any questions, but actually believe we're in order just to receive that item and move on. We do have a few comment cards on 3.1, which I will recognize, but prior to that, if any board member has a question, I'd be glad to answer it. Ms. Hill?
I have a couple of questions, just to get some clarity, understanding, because prior to the Common Core being adopted, most of us were not board members at that time. So, did we, as a board, follow the Administrative Procedures Act? Because I've known, there have been times that I've questioned our process in regards to the APA, even we had someone come and present a PowerPoint presentation in regards to us following the APA process correctly. So, I wasn't a member of the board at that time, so I would like to know, how did that process take place?
Well, let me say this, the, our DOE Council believes that we followed all the necessary steps that we needed to follow. The specifics of why the APA was or was not used will have to be determined in this court case, and so our council has given, reassured us, working also with the AG's office, that the proper procedures were followed, and ultimately, the court case will have to make that determination. Ms. Beebe?
Okay. As a follow-up, Mr. Romer, excuse me, as it relates to Bessie approving policies, and I would think many of the policies stem from legislative action. Am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So, I do realize with media coverage, reports indicate that in this situation, the APA was not followed, and it's because the legislature in 2012 approved Common Core standards. It doesn't make sense to me that we can pick and choose when we adhere to the Administrative Procedures Act. So, I just want my colleagues on Bessie to realize, you know, the explanation offered, I personally don't accept. It doesn't make sense to me.
Appreciate your comments. Would you care? Not particularly. You can, if you'd like.
Well, I'd just say a couple of things. The, just so you have the facts and the history on this, there is a longstanding Administrative Procedures Act passed piece of regulation that says that the school system shall use the standards that Bessie adopts. That was passed years ago. So, like it does with many things, Bessie adopted the standards per that piece of regulation that was passed in the Administrative Procedures Act. Now, to your point, Dr. Beebe, Bessie did then take that law you're talking about and put it, while you were on the board, and put it through the Administrative Procedures Act process, meaning the part that says nationally recognized standards and so on. It went all the way through that Administrative Procedures Act until the governor vetoed it. So, the Common Core law that you're talking about was passed by the board in, through the Administrative Procedures Act process, and ultimately was vetoed by the governor.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Lee?
Isn't this essentially what the lawsuit is about, is to answer these questions?
It is.
So, I don't know much we can or should be trying to do, the suit itself.
I agree. I mean, we have to be represented in the lawsuit, assuming they get, we get served, if we go through the normal procedures there. This was really put on the agenda in case we needed outside counsel, but since conferring with the AG, they have confirmed, in fact, they would represent us. Ms. Smith, did you want to be recognized?
Yes, please. And I think, not to confuse the PARC with Common Core, I think maybe the clarity needs to be, we followed the Administrative Procedures Act with PARC, but I'm not sure that that process was followed with Common Core. And I know a court will make that, will make that determination, and if, in fact, we should have, like most state agencies have to follow APA, I would think that we would be no different than, than any other state agency, just that comment.
And I will, if I may, Mr. Romer? In 2010, when Bessie, the board at that time, approved Common Core standards, it would appear to me that the public would have had the opportunity to respond. In fact, much of the pushback, as I see it, from parents and from education stakeholders is the failure for Bessie, the LDOE, to effectively communicate the Common Core standards, what are they, why are we implementing, and so forth. So, I think a delayed response, 2012, and the comment offered by Superintendent White in 2012, it went through the APA, and of course, Common Core standards are not used, but nationally recognized standards, and many would debate, you Superintendent White, that the Louisiana GLEs, the standards implemented prior to the Common Core standards, were nationally recognized standards. So, again, that's where the debate comes to light.
Thank you, Dr. Beebe. I will go to comment cards, if they would like to still speak. Lee Barrios?
I have to ask, because I'm not seeing where this conversation is going.
Catherine Gopit? Candace Watzee? Thank you. We need a motion to receive this item. It doesn't require, there's a motion by Mrs. Orange Jones, and there's a second by Mrs. Boffey. Is there any objection to receiving this item? Here, none. Next item, please.
The next item is item 3.2, consideration of Navis Hill et al. versus Louisiana State Governor et al., 19th Judicial District Court, docket number 621170, section 27.
Thank you. Members, if you will allow, I will again give a brief summary of why this item is being considered. There was a suit, the Navis Hill et al. versus Louisiana filed in the 19th Judicial District. The essence of that suit is in regard to the constitutional authority of Bessie and the role that Bessie plays in making education policy in this state. We, as a board, have a decision to make as to whether we want to be, intervene on that suit, and I would simply say, given that they are arguing our constitutional authority, that it makes sense that we would have a seat at the table while that is being argued. So, that is what this item is for, and that is what is currently being considered, is in fact, would this board choose to intervene for the sake of having representation in the room while Bessie's constitutional authority is being discussed? I'll certainly answer questions and then ask if there's a motion that anyone would like to make. And we, again, have some comment cards, which I will get to. Mr. Garvey? Are you ready for a motion, or you want to say comments first? Let's go ahead and get the motion on the table. I move that the board authorize counsel to intervene in or take any other action necessary to participate on Bessie's behalf in Navis Hill et al. versus Louisiana State Governor et al., 19th Judicial District Court, docket number 621170, section 27. There's a motion. Is there a second, Ms. Orange Jones and Ms. Smith? Okay, we can get to that in a second, but there is a motion and there's a second. Are there questions or comments from board members before I go to Ms. Hill? And then, Dr. Beebe?
Okay, I'm just trying to get some clarity. So, we're, you're asking the board to approve and for outside counsel to come in, to be at the table, to determine if our constitutional rights as a board, that we are adhering to those, or that we're debating the government? I'm just trying to figure out, because I think we have counsel here, Ms. Joan Hunt, I mean, she should know business is constitutional. If we're doing this correctly.
Well, the constitutional roles of Bessie, and what does that mean in terms of determining education policy, is what that case is going to be discussing. Working with the AG's office, they recommended and supported our outside counsel represent us if, in fact, we chose to move forward. If you remember, in the last board meeting, we agreed to retain counsel, but not to move forward in hopes of trying to reach a remedy. We have been unable to reach a remedy. This case will be heard in the next two weeks, or three weeks. I think the date is, I think there's an initial hearing on the 11th. There's another final hearing, I say final hearing, on the 18th, and my, my point is that if they're going to be discussing our constitutional rights and our constitutional authority, Bessie should probably be at the table representing itself as to what our constitutional authority is. So, that's, that's where we are.
So, are we paying someone to do this, or is they going to do it?
It's pro bono. The contract that has been submitted to the AG and signed on behalf of this board is pro bono, no expenses and no, no fees related to it. It would be zero cost to this board.
Okay.
Dr. Beebe?
As I reviewed some of the individuals within the group, Hill et al., they represent the charters, and I'm concerned that Bessie, while entering into, or joining this group, could there be a possible conflict of interest, particularly when we oversee charter entities? So, I think we're muddying the waters if we join this group.
Well, I don't feel there's a conflict, because the, what we're trying to determine and make sure we play a role in, is the, what is our constitutional authority, and what do we get to do? That doesn't really have to relate to what is our constitutional authority over charter schools. It has to do specifically with the policies of assessment and test questions that are under consideration right now, so. And I'm certain if there's a conflict, that would certainly be brought up in the courts, and if the courts determine there was a conflict, they would rule accordingly. Somebody else? Dr. Moranti?
Just for clarification, are we looking to join a group to determine our constitutionality, or are we going to retain counsel, Bessie retain counsel, to determine that constitutionality? Second part of this is, if it is pro bono work, is there a need to enter into a contract to do that?
I'll answer too. We are retaining counsel to intervene in an existing suit, okay? Which just means we get a seat at the table. If the courts allow us to intervene, we get a seat at the table, and as they discuss Bessie's role in government and the Constitution, we will have our own representative in there. Your second question, it being pro bono, I had the same question you had, is why is there a need for a contract? The AG's office indicated to us that regardless of an amount being spent, whether it be zero or a large amount, that, that contract still needed to be forwarded to the AG's office for their approval, and they've since given that approval. Ms. Smith?
Is it your understanding that if the board votes to become an intervenor in the lawsuit, that all parties would be subject to full disclosure and subpoenas, et cetera?
I'm certain. I don't know about what you mean by all parties, but I'm certain any Bessie member could, any Bessie member could be, yeah. Any Bessie member could be questioned, et cetera.
Full disclosure and subpoenas, okay.
Yeah, and I think that would be whether, actually, whether we're intervening or not. If someone had a question of a Bessie member, we could be subpoenaed under those circumstances. I'm going to go to comment cards. I'll come back to board members if you have additional questions. Candace Watzee?
I want to preserve my time in case there's any questions.
Okay. Lee Barrios?
Lee Barrios, retired teacher from St. Tammany. I'm not a lawyer. I believe there's only one lawyer who serves on this board. However, I have asked some questions regarding this, based on what I consider, what I personally see to be an ethical issue, and that is to join in with Choice Foundation, which is really, I believe, subject to the same ethics laws as this governmental entity, and is under the supervision or authority of this governmental entity. To me, that's a conflict of interest, because Choice gets their charter by virtue of this, of the Bessie Board. So, that's number one. Number two, I think you're making it something that's fairly simple, more complicated by this pro bono aspect of you're getting, my understanding is, you would get a pro bono lawyer, but then you all would join Choice, and I believe it's Ball and Stanford Children, several others, who are not getting pro bono services. So, in effect, you would be accepting an in-kind service, or a gift, or some sort of remuneration by virtue of your joining at no charge to this lawsuit. So, besides the fact that I don't believe the taxpayers need to waste their money, when you all will definitely be called in on this lawsuit to present your side of the story and to testify, I don't see where you need to join the lawsuits to do that. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Elizabeth Myers?
Yes, my name's Elizabeth Myers, and I reside in Livingston Parish. I would like, for the record, to let you know that I've had a number, as a parent advocate, a number of emails, Facebook comments, and Facebook messages furious at the time that was given for this meeting. These parents cannot just, at the drop of a hat, show up to these meetings, and I have been here several times in which our group has been made fun of because we had less than other people, and what you don't understand is that I am sitting before you today with information from about 600 parents who are angry, who are saying, why are we not being given time? I think it behooves you to give parents enough time to be at these meetings when such important information is being shared. Having said that, I am very uncomfortable, as are the parents that I am here speaking for, because they are rocking babies and taking care of their jobs, et cetera, that we are going to join a private lawsuit. You are a public body. You are a constitutional body, only in that you are a governing body, you are an administrative body. If you read the Constitution of our state, you are an administrative body, a governing body. There are only three levels of law in our country. It's executive, judicial, and legislative, and everything else falls underneath that. I am very uncomfortable, as a taxpayer, as a parent whose child has been pulled from the system because of the mandates that you are sitting down on, on our school systems, where I had to make a choice to remove my son from the system because of things being done in the classroom, and now my grandson asking the same thing. I am asking you to do what's right for the citizens of this state. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Catherine Gopit?
Do I sit in the same chair?
Oh, you don't have to, but.
Any, any might.
Any, I hope we will find out.
Thank you very much.
You do need to press it, thank you.
There we go. Thank you very much. My name is Catherine Guppelt. First point I'd like to make is, at the last meeting, we had a discussion, you did, about suing the governor, and you decided to hire counsel, not to sue the governor, just to have him in the wings, just in case you wanted to. That was you suing the governor. There were at least two Bessie members at that time that expressed the desire of, Ms. Bradford and Ms. Moranti, that they did not want to sue the governor. Others did not join in with that vote. Suing is something we do when we can't sit down and discuss and come to a consensus. There's a conflict that can't be resolved. I believe this body has an opportunity to resolve the conflict that we have without a lawsuit. Second, the Constitution is there. The judge will determine whether it's constitutional or not, whether you join the lawsuit or not, and you may be asked to come in and testify whether you join the lawsuit or not, and there does appear to be some conflict of interest. And number three, the other groups that are involved in this lawsuit and are being paid, mostly from money out of state, will have a seat at the table, but the, but the parents and the teachers that are concerned will not, and you need to think about that. I would hope that this body could move forward with the business of education and not get distracted and sidetracked with these lawsuits, because they will be a distraction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Danny Garrett?
He didn't hear.
Danny Garrett, I know you're enjoying yourself in the back, but if you want to come on down, you can.
Mr. Chairman, members, actually, I have. There we go. Danny Garrett, representing Louisiana School Board Association. Really, my comment's more of an inquiry, just to get more clarity before y'all vote. Three things. One, will Bessie be authorizing counsel to intervene as a plaintiff, or authorizing counsel to intervene as a defendant? Because those are essentially your two options. So, you can essentially join the plaintiffs in suing the governor's office, or you can join the governor's office in defending the suit, because you got to pick a side. The other, other item is, will be, will be you authorizing counsel to file any sort of, because I saw it was intervene and take other actions, will it be authorizing counsel to file a third-party claim or reconventional demand in the matter, against any of the existing parties or someone who is not yet a party? And thirdly, I didn't hear in the resolution where it directed, where it gave any information about who was going to direct the actions of special counsel in the litigation on behalf of Bessie, because certainly counsel will have to have approval from Bessie. I mean, as a lawyer, in your litigation, you don't go file stuff without asking your client if you can file it. So, I think those three things, I think, could add more clarity to everyone, and just as a little aside, just to clarify, you do need a contract, even if there's no money transpiring, because a lawyer can't say he represents a client unless he has an agreement that the client says, yes, you can represent.
Danny, I'm glad to answer your question quickly. We were, we'll be a plaintiff. I forget the, the other two comments, other than, this is asking counsel to intervene on our behalf as a plaintiff and, and take necessary steps to represent us in that suit. And I forget your third point.
Third-party or reconventional?
It'd be the parties that are currently listed in the, in the suit.
Would we authorize this thing, intervening as a plaintiff, to file a third-party, a third-party?
That would be a third, to file a third-party would be a separate item. Dr. Moranti, then, Mr. Garvey?
Wouldn't it serve the same purpose? I'm thinking that, so that we could avoid any perception of a conflict of interest as stated by Ms. Bradford. Wouldn't it accomplish the same purpose if that entity got the judgment regarding constitutionality, and then we proceeded, yeah, with, since we have tried everything we could to come to some agreement with all of the proposals that we sent forth that were rejected, wouldn't it then be better if we just held our own counsel?
I'd make two points. One, there's no conflict. Our, our counsel is our counsel, the other plaintiffs have their counsel, okay? And our counsel is to represent us, so there's no conflict there.
I'm talking about the other one, that we could join in the lawsuit. I'm not talking about our retaining legal counsel.
No, we're joining, we're not joining their counsel, we're telling our counsel to go represent us in that suit.
So, why would we do that if we had our own?
If we had our own suit, we'd have to, we'd have to choose to file a separate lawsuit on our own, when the, the matter is basically the same matter that's going to be discussed, which is the constitutional authority of Bessie, and that matter is in front of the courts. And now, where they're going to be arguing the constitutional authority of Bessie, and we should be in the room while they do so. It also is the quickest way to resolution. That, that suit is currently filed and going through the process. We all have a sense of urgency of trying to resolve this, one way or another. That's also the quickest way for us to be at the table. Okay. Mr. Garvey, did you have a comment, or? Yeah, you had said that this motion only authorizes us to enter into the lawsuit as plaintiffs and does not authorize us, or our attorneys, to do a third-party demand or other such actions. I'm not sure that this limits our attorney to that extent. I think it authorizes him to do what he thinks is proper, to preserve the constitutional authority of Bessie. And I just, I don't think that we should put limits on what types of claims he can file in doing that. It's my, my understanding that, and here's what I intended, was that we would take two, two possible steps here today. One was the first, to intervene, and the counsel will determine what is required to make sure we intervene and we have represented properly. And that's my point. Yeah. The. Counsel will decide. Counsel will decide what's required to intervene and represent us properly. Another step we could potentially take, and is why item 3.3 is on the agenda, is if we wanted to authorize counsel to take any and all actions in regard to this item, we could consider that. But the first item, 3.2, is simply the step of intervening and allowing counsel to make proper decisions and representations for us to get that done. Does that make sense? Yes. Ms. Smith?
So, in the last meeting, when Bessie retained legal counsel pro bono, and then that same legal counsel is now going to be representing another party that we could possibly intervene with?
No, they're representing us.
Okay, so they're representing us, but once we intervene, they're one and the same, is that correct?
No, the other parties will still have to retain their counsel, and we will retain our counsel.
But it's my understanding that the pro bono attorneys that we, that we retained are the same attorneys?
We, we separated. The other, if you remember last meeting, we actually had two firms listed. The other firm came to us at some point after that meeting and indicated that they had been approached about filing a suit.
So, I wasn't part of that meeting, so I?
I think you were, but, but we made the determination so that there would not be a conflict, that if they were going to represent other parties, that they should go represent those parties only, and that we should retain counsel that is our counsel, and not have co-counsels or the such.
But who is our counsel?
It's Price Gordon, is who we submitted to the Attorney General.
And who's your counsel? Who's the, the third-party counsel?
I don't know their official name. Cuperman.
But they were the ones we were considering at the last meeting.
They were.
Let's be perfectly clear about that.
No, they were. No, they were.
So when we intervene, I'm still asking the question, when we intervene, if we do, then are we exempt from following the, going through the Division of Administration?
That is a question that's been asked, and one that we've disagreed with Division of Administration, and I'm certain that's a question that the courts will have to determine.
So it's a possibility we could be in violation of the law if we don't go through the D O A?
The courts would have to determine that. Our counsel has determined very clearly that we don't have to do that, and I've had the same conversations with the Attorney General's office for what it's worth.
What was his response?
Well, I'm not going to quote the Attorney General. He felt confident that we had a very strong argument to retain our own counsel.
I'd like to hear from that office or from the D O A, if we have anybody here on their take on that.
Any other questions? I'll continue with comment cards. Candace Wattsi?
Yes.
Okay. Liz Merle?
Do we have someone from the AG's?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Liz Merle. I'm with the Division of Administration. I'm the executive counsel to the commissioner. Our position is that the statute does require the division's concurrence in the hiring of any outside counsel. It expressly states that it does, and the Attorney General's office, in our conversations with them, has agreed that it requires our concurrence. So I'm not sure whether you got conflicting information from them or not, but in our conversations, they have agreed that the statute very expressly requires both of the parties to concur. So our position is that that contract would require our approval and that there would be no attorney-client relationship, and there would be no authority to represent the state as legal counsel without a contract in place.
I appreciate you clarifying that. I don't, I don't know, I can't explain the differences in the conversation. I will say this, if the court determines that we cannot enter the contract, then you'll be right. The court will have to determine that.
Well, I would also suggest to you that there is a process for resolving disputes between agencies and the state, specifically with OCR, with regard to OCR requirements for approval of a contract, and that is the same requirement that we would suggest to you applies to some of this other disputes, and there is no jurisdiction for a court to entertain those issues absent coming through that process.
And I appreciate your comments, and I think we have tried very diligently to work with your office in that regard.
I'm not, I'm not aware that there's any official proposal that's ever been presented to the Office of Contractual Review or to the commissioner. So if I'm wrong, then that's fine. I know there was a letter that was sent this morning relating to a-
Are you talking about retention of our counsel? We sent a letter.
There was a contract that was submitted, and we sent back some comments on that contract, and we invited you to come to a meeting, or somebody to come to a meeting and talk about that issue with OCR, and no one came.
Well, I don't want to get in a tiff or tat. I will say this, we received your letter on Thursday, I believe. Having asked for a response sooner than that, but nonetheless, we did receive a letter, we responded to that letter, point for point. After responding, your office took additional steps in the press and elsewhere regarding the status of our contract. Given the actions of the, at least the last few weeks, if not the last few months, it seems at some point you reach diminishing returns, and I think we've reached that point. I think we've exhausted all of our attempts to negotiate, and that if, in fact, we're unable to retain counsel, the judge will rule so. And the judge will say, you don't have standing, you're not allowed to retain counsel. So I appreciate your comments today. Thank you. Carol McCall?
Hi, I'm Carol McCall. I'm the vice chair of the Citizens for One Greater New Orleans Education Committee. For the past seven years, Citizens for One has researched, educated ourselves and others, monitored, and advocated for higher educational standards for our students. Bessie is responsible for adopting and monitoring those standards. We ask that you, as a committee, vote to assert and protect Bessie's constitutional role to establish and maintain those standards. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Warner Smith?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. He's, I apologize. He says he supports the recommendation but does not wish to speak, and Ruthie Fryerson does the same, supports the recommendation but does not wish to speak. That concludes the comment cards in regard to this item. The Bessie members, we do have a motion in a second. Do Bessie members have any additional questions?
I do.
Ms. Hill, and then Dr. Beebe.
Well, in regards to the AG response, because I read the letter that was sent to us, their response was that they agreed upon us receiving outside counsel within 30 days. We had 30 days to identify counsel, I mean, someone that would represent us, represent us. However, that, it still has to go through the proper procedure in regards to the governor's administration to approve that counsel. So I don't know the young lady that just left, but what she was saying was totally correct just a few minutes ago. I just want to assure that. The AG did say that we can have outside counsel, gave us 30 days, but it still has to go through the governor's administrative office to approve. So I just want to make sure that's clarity out there for the public.
I don't believe, I don't mean to cut you off. Go ahead, Ms. Hill.
And then, secondly, just to respond to some of the comments in regards to the standards, I don't think anyone disagrees that we need more higher standards. But the issue at the table that I think the community is misunderstanding, let's take the governor off the table. Let's take our president off the table. Let's look at the issue at hand. If we have violated the procurement law, meaning the bidding law, then we, as a board, share a year to our own law. If we hold our districts, our educators, if we hold ourselves to these standards, let the process take its course, and whatever the results are, then we can move forward. And just to make this comment, even in my own district, when someone called anonymously to say, hey, we have an issue in EBR, the Department of Education went in and they did an audit in a district, and the audit that they did within EBR, to me, was unacceptable. And just to quote what John White said, that there were malfeasance in office. To quote some of your comments, Mr. White, you said it looked like a Watergate scandal. So with that being said, if we have to make sure our district is held to accountability and to standards in law, as a board and as a department, we should as well. So with that, I will say that I'm not going to vote for this item, and that's all I have to say.
I appreciate your comments. Dr. Beebe?
And Mr. Romer, I know when you began the meeting, you said that we would not have a discussion of common core standards, but for those in the audience who applaud rigorous standards, I will be the first to acknowledge, I also applaud rigorous standards. But how do we know common core standards are those rigorous standards when they have not been vetted, the research is not there to prove it? But with that said, I will say that when I was elected to this board in 2011 on inauguration day, comments were made that Louisiana has an opportunity, the nation's eyes are upon us, and we have a chance to improve education for children. Today, we're arguing about a lawsuit suing the governor of Louisiana. It is a travesty, folks, that we are faced with a lawsuit suing the governor, and I also want to say, we can achieve the same outcome. There is Hill et al. They have, they're filed a suit. The judge, the courts will render a decision. Why can't we live with that decision? Why do we have to go on record as suing the governor of Louisiana? And I will, I will say this, I am not an ally of Governor Jindal, but it is not about Republican, Democrat, it's about doing the right thing for Louisiana and getting on with the education of our students. School will begin in two weeks, ladies and gentlemen. And Mr. Romer?
Mr. Romer?
Thank you, Dr. Beebe. Dr. Maranti?
This is Reed.
I think that we're in this position because of Governor Jindal. We need to know, as a board, as a state board of education, what our constitutional rights are. The fact that the governor issued executive orders stopping this literally stops us in our tracks. And at this point, there is no other thing that we need to do but to determine what we can do that's in the best interest of our students. And if that means that we have to get a determination on the constitutionality of the executive orders, that's exactly what we're going to have to do as a board. I don't even put it out there about suing Governor Jindal. I put it out there as determining what is our constitutional rights. If that's what it takes, we, as a board, must know our fiduciary responsibilities, who sets standards and who sets testing. As a Bessie board member, that's what I want to know. We didn't get ourselves in this position, we would have been moving forward. The executive orders put us at a stop, and I think that we, as a board, has the responsibility to find out what those rights are.
Thank you. Dr. Maranti. Ms. Smith?
Just to be clear, I want to make sure that before we vote, if we are an intervenor in a lawsuit, and that lawsuit is filing suit against the governor, and we enter that as an intervenor, we are indeed filing suit against the governor. And I would think that law would mandate that we go through the Division of Administration if we are going to file suit against the governor. Entering into the agreement as an intervenor is no different. It might be, sound a little better than saying we're filing suit against the governor, but indeed, we're filing suit against the governor. So I would think that we're going to be in violation of the law if we don't follow the Division of Administration's procedure for getting approval with that. If we're, if the board is dead set on filing suit against the governor, hire our own legal counsel and do it without joining as an intervener.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Bofe, and then Mr. Garvey to close.
So, the thing that I have to say is that we can't pick which laws we want to follow. So there are a number of laws that are at play here that have created the situation that we're in, and so we're stuck in a position to where there are laws that were established by the legislature, there have been orders that have been given by the governor, and we're stuck in between the two. We have three branches of government for a reason. By going to the courts, we figure out how we can move on our constitutional rights as a body.
Thank you, Ms. Bofe. Before I go to you, Mr. Garvey, Mr. Lee indicated, I want to go to you to close, Mr. Garvey. Mr. Lee?
It's most regrettable that we find ourselves in the position we're in. There's no such thing as anybody winning, and that's, that's just most regrettable. It appears that two suits have already been filed on both sides of the issue. I don't understand why that won't resolve it and determine what our authority is. It appears to me that the second suit that was filed will do that, will determine our authority without the board having to get directly involved in the lawsuit. If any individual board member wants to be involved, I think they could be as an individual, even saying that they're a member of the board, without the board having to take a formal position. Some way or the other, this really does need to be resolved short of court action, but that stage is already set. I just don't see that it's going to resolve it for Bessie to take a formal position.
Appreciate your comments, Mr. Lee. Mr. Garvey?
Yeah, two points. I don't know that the parties that are in this suit currently have the same motivation to resolve this issue as quickly as we do. I think by having Bessie get involved in this, we can push this case along faster than if we're sitting on the sidelines, just watching what other people are doing. So I think that that will help the children of this state by us getting in to push it faster. Second of all, I've heard a lot of comments about statutes and rules or laws that say Bessie has to do one thing, but I haven't heard mention the overriding constitution, which says that Bessie has the right to determine, or has the duty to determine certain things about education. And I think the issue here that I have heard from the attorneys is that, our attorneys, is that the Constitution, which we all know overrules statutes, says that we have the right to do certain things, and the statute is stopping us. The statute that says we have to go through certain steps before hiring an attorney is potentially stopping us from carrying out our constitutional duty, and that is why we need to ask the judge, which is the case? Please clarify this for us. Is the statute stopping us, or is it not? And until we ask a judge to clarify that, we don't really know where we stand.
Thank you. We have a motion, and we have a second. There's objection. We'll do a roll call vote. Thank you.
Okay. The motion is by Mr. Garvey, seconded by Ms. Orange Jones, that the board authorize counsel to intervene in or take any other action necessary to participate on Bessie's behalf and Nevis Hill et al. versus Louisiana State Governor et al., 19th Judicial District Court, docket number 621170, section 27. Dr. Beebe?
No.
Dr. Beebe votes no. Ms. Bofe?
Yes.
Ms. Bofe votes yes. Ms. Bradford?
With a heavy heart, yes.
Ms. Bradford votes yes. Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey votes yes. Mr. Guio is absent. Ms. Hill?
No.
Ms. Hill votes no. Mr. Lee?
No.
Mr. Lee votes no. Dr. Maranti?
Yes.
Dr. Maranti votes yes. Ms. Orange Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Orange Jones votes yes. Ms. Smith?
No.
Ms. Smith votes no. Mr. Romer, do you care to exercise your right to vote?
Yes, I'll vote yes.
Mr. Romer votes yes. One, two, three, four, five, six. The motion passes six to four with one absent.
Thank you. Next item is item 3.3. If we could read it quickly, please.
Consideration of a discussion regarding additional options related to Executive Order Number BJ 2014-7.
Members, as I mentioned earlier, 3.3, it was really contemplated if different or additional action was wanting to be taken by this board. I'm not certain, given that we passed item 3.2, that 3.3 is required, but certainly would welcome any suggestion if they would. Otherwise, we will receive item 3.3 with a proper motion.
Okay, I'll make the motion. I move that the board authorize counsel to take all necessary action to represent Bessie's interests and pursue legal remedies on its behalf regarding Executive Order Number BJ 2014-7 and related implementation.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second. And I will, I will give a little commentary here. It is a very difficult process to manage as a board, the legal process, because things are changing pretty quickly. We do not meet on a daily basis. And I just wanted this item on there, quite frankly, for us to consider how we wanted to manage this process. If another issue arose that required our counsel to take additional action, did we want to keep meeting as a board to do that, or do we want to authorize counsel to make that decision? The motion is proper, just so we can have this discussion about whether we want to take that step or not. The board may or may not want to take that step, may want us to return to this venue if, in fact, another item were to come up. I will tell you this, I'm comfortable either way. It's certainly more difficult to manage as we are now, but if that's the, what the board would like to do, then we can continue to manage it as we are. So that's the end. If there are additional comments, Dr. Beebe?
Yes. Speaking on behalf of the thousands of constituents I have in District 3, as a representative of 15 parishes, I-
of 15 parishes, I certainly want to be at the table. So if it means convening a meeting, then so be it.
Sure. Thank you. Ms. Smith?
And I agree, but I want to make sure that we discuss the leeway that the attorney is going to have on this. If it's going to be expanded to be more than just the interveners on any of these legal cases, I think we've got to make sure that it is precisely defined as to what we're going to be asking them to do. I don't think the scope should change.
Let me add this. 3.3 really was in anticipation of perhaps people wanting to take a different direction other than 3.2. So, again, for what it's worth, I don't disagree with you, Dr. Beebe, and I'm glad for us to continue to manage it this way. It just may require a special meeting, which I try to avoid if we can, because that's not the best way for us to do our business. So I want board members to know that I'm comfortable if we just receive item 3.3. The motion was in order, so we can have this discussion, but we can continue to manage as we're managing. I'm very comfortable doing that.
So just for clarity, you are agreeing that each time anything changes within this lawsuit, that we are convening?
Not within this lawsuit. Okay, not within item 3.2, but if another issue were to arise, okay, we've had, for instance, we did not anticipate the legislature was going to, the group of legislators was going to sue us. We didn't anticipate that. My guess is other things may happen, perhaps outside of this particular lawsuit that's listed, that may require our attention. And I'm hearing some sentiment that if that happens, you would rather us reconvene to discuss it as a board, even if it required a special meeting, versus giving very broad latitude to our counsel to just continue to argue on our behalf regardless of the form, basically, if that makes sense. So what would be in order, if that's what you want, would be a substitute motion just to receive item 3.3. And we would receive it, not take action in terms of engaging counsel to do those things. If another item came up that required different legal action than what was in 3.2, we would have to reconvene, either in a special meeting or a regular meeting.
And I would just like to add in 3.2, that we as a board need to be updated in regards to the process, if any changes. And even if our legal counsel comes to the board, you as the president, and needs some advice on how to move forward, I believe the board needs to be a part of that process, not just only the officers. So I don't know if we need to add that along with what we already have.
Well, I don't want to confuse. Item 3.2, we've given our counsel the authority to go intervene and take the necessary steps to do, to represent us in that board meeting, okay? And every time counsel makes a decision, that's not going to come in front of this board if it has to do with item 3.2. Item 3.3 says if there's something outside of that lawsuit that requires additional legal action or legal consideration, it would have to come back to this board.
And you need a substitute motion to that effect?
Yes, ma'am.
I offer it.
Okay. So really, the substitute motion would be to receive item 3.3.
To receive.
And is there a second to receive? And there is a second. We do have some, it was second by Ms. Orange Jones. We do have some comment cards, given that we're going to receive. I'll certainly still call your name. I'm not certain it would require comment, but you're welcome to give it if you wish. Barry Irwin, he waves. Debbie Moe.
Debbie Moe, representing Louisiana Association of Educators. I know that this is a very narrow topic, but I do want to put onto the table some very important issues. Though this meeting doesn't really address this, our educators need a decision now as to what this year will bring for them and for the children they teach. So I'm going to speak to you as two people. I'm going to speak to you as the president for LAE, and also as a grandmother. Right now, we need to make a decision as to what direction curricula we'll take, what test our children will be taking. I do not want any educator, or child, or community, or school, school district, to be collateral damage to a dispute between the governor and the Bessie Board. There has to be some decisions made now about what we teach in our classrooms, what tests these kids will be held accountable to, because it affects their futures, it affects the futures of educators, it affects the future of public schools and public school districts. We cannot go without knowing what direction we need to be going in. Secondly, I believe that this year, there should be some steps made towards including practitioners from all around the state, in deciding whether or not these standards are correct for our children, whether or not the curricula is correct for our children, making the needed corrections in all of these areas. We are putting our children, we're putting our teachers in a position where they are becoming, as I said, collateral damage to a dispute between two governmental agencies. Furthermore, our teachers, those that speak with me, and I speak with many, feel as though they are not being included, and therefore are complicit in doing something that they don't feel is right for children. I know that there are many teachers who believe in the Common Core, believe that that is the right path, but there are teachers who do not. And especially those teachers who teach in our elementary schools, in the very lowest of the grade levels, K through 3. They do not believe that these standards are, in many cases, appropriate for the kids that they teach. Something has to be done about that. We have to have some kind of coming together of the State Department and our practitioners to determine that. We need to determine if these are correct.
Ms. Moe, if I could ask you to wrap it up?
I will.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
As president of LAE, I can't make any demands of you. But as a grandmother of a kindergartner, and I have three other grandchildren who will be entering school in the next five years, I feel that I must demand of this body that we do what is right for our children, follow the procurement laws, either use what we used last year, or we declare some kind of moratorium on testing this year, and take this year to figure out what direction we want to go in. We cannot sacrifice a single child or a single educator to something that is so up in the air that nobody knows exactly where we need to go. Nobody has any direction, any clarity. I know that our school districts will continue to do what they're doing, but if the test does not test what they teach, these children are going to end up in the middle, along with our educators, our school districts, and our schools. And I don't want to see that at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moe. Lee Barrios?
Lee Barrios, retired teacher from St. Tammany. I too want to offer up some clarity on an issue that I believe has been hypercomplicated, so that nobody really, or at least the public, really doesn't understand what's going on. I've got several documents in my hands that I'd like to refer to. One is a document that states part, state roles in the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness for College and Careers. It's on the Park website. Says the Partnership for Assessment of Readiness, Park, excuse me, is a group of states committed to building a next-generation assessment system for elementary and secondary schools that is based upon adoption of the Common Core state standards. Further down, it says governing states, there are two kinds of states, governing states and participating states. Louisiana is a governing state. It's a greater commitment. Governing states make the strongest commitment to Park and its activities, and therefore have the most decision-making authority. Each governing state agrees to participate exclusively in Park and has committed to administer the assessment system statewide during the 1415 school year. Next, I have the Park bylaws. It says on page eight, "The governing board shall appoint one of the governing states, Louisiana's one, in the consortium to service the fiscal agent for the consortium." Further down, it says, "Subjected all times to Section 13-1 regarding contractual signatory authority for contracts, and subject to the direction of the governing board, and upon the approval of the governing board, the fiscal agent shall, A, issue RFPs in order to procure goods and services on behalf of the consortium; B, designate another governing state as the issuing entity of RFPs for procurements on behalf of the consortium." Then I have the contract between the state of New Mexico and Pearson. Pearson was awarded by Park the authority to write the Park assessments, but the contract is with Pearson. You will see throughout this 99-page document that it is obviously written on behalf of all the governing, at least the governing, if not participating states in Park. On page 22, it says, "This statement of work shall be incorporated in govern," move down. "The terms of this Exhibit A, Statement of Work, and all Statement of Work attachments and incorporated documents shall be incorporated in any contract with a Park-governing state that wishes to purchase such services from the contractor. The contractor is Pearson." There are references throughout the contract about the Park-governing states. On page 67, it gets to the meat of it, and that's the cost. The costs are based on the total volume of tests ordered from the consortium members. The highest price...
If you could, I'll let you continue, but if you would start to wrap it up.
Okay, I'm almost finished. The highest price is given to a volume of between 5 million, 500,000 to 7 million tests. No state has anywhere near that number, which means it's based on the consortium, all the states, or as many as possible, purchasing those. This is basically the contract that this state would have to enter into. And we're arguing over procurements and RFPs, when in essence, we're committed, and if we were to order the Park tests, it would be the Pearson test, and these are the terms, as per Pearson, for us. So all this lawsuit and all this argument over procurement is really a moot question. And I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Myers. She waves. Thank you. Catherine Gopel?
It appears now that our course is set, and this board will now sue the governor, instead of being about the business of the education of children in the state. The executive order that you were considering, this item, is number seven. I want to make a few points from that executive order. It says that public bodies must conduct competitive procurement processes. That was not done with Park. That is why the governor issued this executive order. He asked this body to put out an RFP. What's so hard about that? A statement was made by Ms. Boffey. We can't pick which laws we want to follow. No, ma'am, you can't. And there is a law in the state, LARS 391551, that says you have to put out a competitive bid. A competitive bid can be put out here regardless of a lawsuit. Secondly, or thirdly, you committed to purchase this assessment before the product was even developed. Think about that. You considered to purchase a product before it was even developed, without giving any due consideration. You have circumvented the law's governing procurement. Even though that was the case, the governor was gracious, I believe, to give you an opportunity to put out an RFP now, to address the situation this year for the education of students. And you have decided, no, as a group, you do not want to do that. It appears to the public that you are here as a majority, not all of you, but the majority, to ensure the failure of the education system in Louisiana. Think about that. Because you will not address the needed hand for the teachers and students in the systems, instead you choose to sue the governor, you have neglected your basic sole responsibility as a board member, to ensure the excellence and success of the education of every child in Louisiana. And you have neglected that. It is a sad day in Louisiana. Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Steve Monahan.
President Romer, members of the board. My name's Steve Monahan. I represent the Louisiana Federation of Teachers. Take somewhat of a different tack here, because we've sat and listened to many conversations in this room and through the legislative session dealing with the subject and the ancillary manners that surround it. So let me just start with the simple observation. There's a saying that goes like this, "May you live in interesting times." And actually, it's purported to be a Chinese curse, and it's equivalent to, "Better to be a dog, you know, in times of peace than be a human in troubled times." So when you look at some totality of this, that's where we seem to be. And I try very hard to kind of put this in some kind of positive light. So on behalf of more than 20,000 members of the LFT, and numbers and numbers of calls since this portion of the drama has played out, I'm expressing a common theme. There is a lot of blame that can be shared in regard to what's happening here today. A lot of blame. But to be really clear, and someone needs to say it just bluntly, none of it belongs to teachers in the classroom or the children they teach. They've been victims of a process that goes back much longer than the current one. And so, asking for patience from educators is a difficult thing to do, because all they were asking for from the beginning is some clarity. So, I wanted to make a positive comment before the board, and so I'll turn it to perhaps the silver lining. As difficult as it is to find a silver lining, but I do believe there always is a lesson that we can learn, and perhaps an opportunity to modify course. Part of the problem that noted through the legislative session is the absolute positions that are taken on all issues, and the name-calling that goes along with positions that have to be taken because of fervent beliefs. However, I do find it so very interesting to see how we all change places, you know? Litigation was once the status quo. Litigation is now, I don't know if I should be termed a revolutionary now, or I should be a conspirator with the status quo. I don't even understand what the status quo is anymore. So here's some positive silver lining. One of the things that's noted through the experience of years, and not the months, of reform-based education, is that there has been an exclusion of those that should be in the game early, haven't been there. That's a common, and that led to some missteps. And so here we are now, what have we discovered as another lesson? We've discovered that folks are kind of wearing out around the country, as well as in this great state, with the quantification of everything relative to children. We're tired of it. Parents are tired of it, and it expresses itself when we discuss curricula now and testing.
Mr. Monahan, if I could...
And I will close. I promise, I will. Right now, I didn't say in closing five times, I haven't even said it, but I'll close there. So here's where I'm going. Wouldn't it be very nice, and I think you do have the power, to enter in the national discussion, sort out the legalities, and declare a moratorium on high-stakes testing as it pertains to children next year for 2014-15? Not because we're looking to change the accountability model, or back up, and because teachers don't have the whip anymore on their backs, they're not going to teach. But in fairness to children, who also are rotting through... But in fairness to children who also are rotting through this uncertainty, let's get it right, move forward, and bring folks to the table, and not hold comparatives out there about how our children stack up against, whether it's 14 states or 44 states, when we know, for whatever reasons that will later reveal themselves, they have been in the current. They have been swept with it. They have not decided their own fate, just like our teachers. Thank you. I think you have it within your power to do that. And I think that dialogue should start with the U.S. Department of Education. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Monahan. Scott Richard.
Thank you. Once again, we have a John Warner Smith supports...I suppose now we're just receiving this item, but did not wish to speak. Members, that...Mr. Lee?
I'd like to ask a question, and then I'd like to offer a motion for consideration. My question is, the action that's been taken, do I assume that addressed Item 3.2 only and does not address Item 3.1?
3.1, I'll just walk through, if you allow me. 3.1, we only had to receive it because all it says really is the AG will represent us if, in fact, that case moves forward. We thought there may be required action of it. It's not required. Item 3.2, we did favorably move to intervene, and now we're considering Item 3.3.
Yes. But with...the board will not be a part of the legislative lawsuit?
Well, we will be. We're named as a defendant in that case. So we're just making sure we have, in fact, our own counsel for that, which will be the AG's office. So if that moves forward, then our board will be involved to the degree the courts require us to be.
Can I make a...do we have a motion on the floor?
We do. We actually have a substitute motion on the floor, which is just to receive Item 3.3, not taking any action.
When that item is disposed of, I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on this item? Ms. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I know we have a substitute motion on the floor, but as I'm listening to the testimony and as I've talked to superintendents and teachers and parents, I think that no matter what side you fall on this, I'm going to continue to bring this forward, and I'll bring it at the next meeting if we're not successful at this one. But I think consideration of discussion regarding additional options would again bring us to the point that we could use the assessments that we had last year, fill the bank of test questions with our own educators. We've been giving these high-stakes tests for 12 to 15 years. We ought to have a replenished bank. We ought to have questions. I believe we have curriculum coordinators across this state and teachers that could replenish that bank. And no matter what side you fall on, lawsuits last a long time. And I believe that it would be absolutely sensible for us to vote, as an option today, to use the assessments that we used last year, replenish the bank of questions, if, in fact, all of them have been given out, replenish that bank of questions with our educators, and then give that test in the spring. And if it's appropriate, Mr. President, I'd like to offer that motion. And I'll second it.
Second.
First of all, it's not appropriate at this moment because we have a substitute motion on the floor. So we're going to have to dispense of the substitute motion first.
I'll withdraw my substitute.
The motions...the body now owns that motion, so you can't withdraw your own motion because we approved that motion in a second. Hold on, let me finish. We also have one more comment card that I need to recognize. So Candace Watzey.
Will you say additional options?
No, I said withdraw the substitute motion. Now that you're on it.
While she's coming, Mr. Romer.
Yes, Ms. Lee.
I didn't know Ms. Smith was going to make that motion. That is the motion I wanted to make, but I appreciate her comment.
Yes, I'm sorry, Ms. Watzey.
All right. Good afternoon, board members. My name is Candace Watzey, and I will be starting my 37th year as a teacher on Monday. Monday is Teacher's Day. The students will join me a week from this Thursday. So in St. Tammany Parish, which is where I teach, we are down to the last week and a half with no roadmap. Just a little background, I taught in Orleans Parish for almost six years at a time where I had to stuff steel wool in the holes in the wall to keep the rats out. I taught at Jesuit High School for 10 years, a top private school. And I can't help but notice that some of you who have your children in private schools, perhaps you don't quite understand what the parents that have children in public schools are facing. Common Core was literally rammed down my throat with no discussion. Louisiana adopted it before it was written. As an eighth-grade ELA teacher whose students take those high-stakes tests every year, I can assure you that the eighth-grade Common Core standards are ridiculously inappropriate. Ridiculously inappropriate. This is a war on teachers, and today I sit, and instead of getting an answer about what happens on Monday, you guys are going to court and suing the governor. What am I going to tell my students? I feel for the four of you that voted against this because you're being dragged into this madness. For the others of you, I truly do not know what is in your heads anymore, except maybe two things: ego and money. Thank you.
Thank you. Members, we have a motion. Let me say in general, real quick. Item 3.2, we'll have a hearing on the 18th of this month, I mean, of next month, of August. It's the fastest way to actually get clarity, and that's why we are going to be at the table during that. And when that decision is made, that also gives us very clear guidance as to how to handle this year's testing. Because that's the whole point. And I'll make one final reminder here. We're here today not because of the actions of Bessie. And whether you agree or disagree with Common Core, et cetera, that's not why we're here. We're here because despite the fact that the legislature passed laws, and despite the fact that Bessie passed policy, and despite the fact that the Constitution outlines authorities to make these decisions, people have chosen to try to stop that process on their own. That's how we got here today. I don't relish going to court. I don't wake up in the morning wanting to go do that. We all want fast remedy. The fastest remedy was Item 3.2, to try to go get clarity immediately regarding the steps the administration has taken. And when we get that clarity, the superintendent has already made the comment publicly that within two weeks of having that clarity, he will tell us what steps our state needs to take for assessments. Okay, so I want to make that clear. So there is a motion to receive Item 3.3. There's another comment card. Liz Merrell from DLA. Sorry.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to comment that there's a hearing next Tuesday. I'm sorry. It's on the...there's a hearing that is scheduled for the 12th, and then there's a hearing scheduled for the 18th on the preliminary injunction. We're filing exceptions on the petition. I mean, we intend to defend against those allegations and have that lawsuit dismissed if it is possible. And if we are not capable of doing that, we will appeal that ruling. This is not moving quickly. I assure you that two weeks is not necessarily going to provide a resolution of this matter. Two weeks is going to be wasted.
Well, we'll find out. And I appreciate your clarity. Y'all made it very clear you have no interest in moving this very quickly.
We have invited the board to come and sit down and talk with us through the administrative process. We have repeatedly said the same thing, that we believe there is a process that is not in litigation. But once we are in litigation, we're going to fight that litigation, and we are going to appeal if we lose on our exception suit.
And we have another meeting. We have another meeting next week.
And I'm just telling what my comments are, that it is a misplaced trust if you think that you're going to get resolution on the 18th. You might not, and it may not be till December, and it may not be till next year if we appeal...
I appreciate that.
If there are appeals by you or by us to the Supreme Court.
And I appreciate that. And we'll deal with those circumstances at an appropriate time.
Well, I'm just clarifying the record about the timing and what the expectations are with regard to the 18th.
Y'all made it very clear what your interests are. Thank you. There is a motion to receive this item, and there is a second. Is there any objection to receiving Item 3.3?
I just want clarification. If we vote to receive 3.3, can I make the motion that is in regards to that agenda item?
Yeah, I would like you to make that motion separately. But right now, let's dispense with the motion that's on the floor to receive Item 3.3. Is there any objection? Hearing none, so move. Ms. Smith, I'll allow you to make your motion.
I would like to move that, due to the fact that we have no indication of what our timeline will be with regard to any closure on all of this, that we use the 1314 assessment leap and ILEAP that we used this past year, and we replenish the test bank of questions with our Louisiana educators. And I'll second.
There's a motion, and there is a second. Mr. Superintendent, did you want to provide clarity?
Yeah, I'd like to provide some factual clarity, which I think will guide. First of all, I share Ms. Smith's commitment to this objective and getting this resolved quickly. I speak with teachers on a daily basis about this issue, and people want clarity, obviously. Let me just talk a little bit to give you some factual background about this issue, and I think that will guide you in how you vote and how you consider this question. There is a difference between a test question and the testing contract that delivers that question. The contract through which the department delivers a testing service has been suspended. And as I heard the testimony at the last meeting, there has been the judgment by the administration, again, and I personally do not agree with it, but that those contracts cannot be used for testing in the 1415 school year. So we have an opinion by those who regulate the contract that there is no contract to go forward to deliver the test. Second, with respect to test questions, the department has access to a set of test questions that it is ready to administer, no matter what contract is in place. So the question is not really...I want to break down Ms. Smith's point into technicalities. The question is not really, can we go ahead with a test? We have questions that we're ready to put on a test. The question is, what contract, if any, do you use to deliver it? What I think Mr. Romer was alluding to, that Ms. Merrell commented on, was, I don't think anybody thinks that there'll be a final judgment on this question within the next two weeks, but is a threshold question of whether or not there is going to be an injunction issued to, at least in a preliminary way, overturn the suspension of the contract or not. If there is a contract to use immediately, then the department has one course of action to deliver test questions it can take. If there isn't a contract immediately, then the department will have to choose, do we enter into a new contract and bring that to you? Do we do it with no contract and bring it to you? I say all this to say that Ms. Smith's motion, while I share the same intent, is technically not really quite the right question. We can't right now just deliver a test because there is no contract through which to deliver it. And we really need until the 18th to determine what is the status of the current contract. We will then be able to give you all the information you need about that and how we plan to deliver the test questions that we currently have access to. I should also mention that the Bessie officers already actually proposed to the administration an alternative whereby we administer a LEAP for this upcoming year and an alternative where we enter into a new contract for this upcoming year. Both of those were rejected. And so in a way, the alternative, in fact, two alternative vehicles have already been presented. So this is an underlying question of the contract, not of whether there are test questions available or not. We're past that point because offers have already been made to the administration to alleviate the current situation.
I have some questions.
Thank you. Dr. Maranti, then Mr. Garvey, then Ms. Smith, then Ms. Hill.
Based on that explanation of no contract and not being able to use life use tests, what would the ramifications be to suspend testing for 2014, 2015, get our RFP in line? And we can't develop in crisis, you know, and we're in crisis right now. I think we have a school session that's getting ready to start. What if we were to say that...what are the ramifications if we said that we suspend testing for 2014, 2015?
If there's not standardized assessment per federal law, it doesn't have anything to do with what questions they are, but the state becomes ineligible to receive federal funding, such as Title I funding, for example. Again, that has nothing to do with whether it's Common Core or something else. It's just as a condition of the No Child Left Behind law, which was the most recently passed education law. You must administer testing, or you lose federal funds. But I would also say, to Ms. Smith's point, I want to be very clear. The state has access to test questions. The question is, how do you deliver them? And we'll have more information based on an initial, and Ms. Merrell is right, it's not a final, it's not a final resolution, but based on an initial hearing, August 18. And at that point, we've committed to, in fact, this has been communicated to school systems today, we will make a determination what the appropriate path to move forward is in terms of what vehicle to deliver those test questions by. That's really the question. Let me just give you some examples. Who drives and drops off the tests? Who prints the tests? Who collects the tests? Who scores the tests? Those are the questions that are at hand with respect to the contract question that Ms. Merrell was referencing.
Mr. Garvey?
Pass.
Mr. Lee?
Mr. Superintendent, are you, as much as you reasonably can, assuring us that we will have school, we will have teaching with, in effect, with teachers, principals, and superintendents deciding the curriculum, and then we would expect to have some type of assessment that will meet the federal guidelines?
Yes, yes. Unquestionably, that will happen. I commit that to you today. My staff and I know that there are a variety of options, and let me just share them with you. Let's just, again, agree the state has access to test questions. Those questions, that's not the issue. The question is, do you deliver it with the current contract? Do you deliver it with a new contract? Or do you deliver it with no contract? My commitment to you is that upon an initial hearing regarding a preliminary injunction, we will have, I agree with Ms. Merrell, not final, but at least some guidance as to that question, and then we can make a recommendation to you as to which path to follow. I recognize it's not final, but we'll have more information than we have now, and we'll be able to make a recommendation regarding that issue.
I think that needs to be conveyed to teachers and to superintendents so that they feel as comfortable as they can about the beginning of this school year.
So you know, Mr. Lee, today, the department is sending a schedule of opening school communications to all superintendents. That schedule details when teachers and principals will be receiving specific academic guidance, as well as when superintendents will be receiving guidance about specific tests. But prior to the end of August, we will have given a commitment as to how the test will be delivered, the test questions that the state has.
Ms. Smith?
I think at the last meeting, if I recollect, when we had the... I think at the last meeting, if I recollect, when we had the commissioner here ask with, and I think my motion basically began by saying, with the approval of the DOA. And it might mean that we would have to ask them to, for the sole purpose, to lift the suspension for us to be able to use LEAP and ILEAP for next year. And I would include that in my motion with the approval of the Division of Administration, that we be allowed to use the assessments that we used last year. For the life of me, I don't understand why we want to run away from something that would be probably very easy to implement. It's one thing to go in and say, well, we're going to try to get a decision sometime for you as soon as possible. We could leave here today, just like we could have a month ago, with something in place that I think would give a clear understanding that we want to begin school this year using the same assessments that we used last year. So I would make my motion to begin by saying, with the approval of the Division of Administration, that we use the assessments that we used last year. And to add to that, that we would, we could put curriculum coordinators and developers and classroom implementers and teachers across the state together, let them have a seat at the table, replenish that bank, and move forward with those assessments, just please.
I think there's, just point of clarification, I think there's already a motion on the table.
But that being the case, I think we're confusing vendors and contracts who deliver the test versus questions that are delivered. The state has test questions. There's not a concern about that. The concern is about the legal question, what contract do you use? And thus, teachers can be assured, and I'm saying this to them today, superintendents can be assured, and I'm saying this to them today, that the test questions will remain the same types of questions we've been developing for years. The question is, which contract do you use? And that's important for the issues that Mr. Lee raised, and let me tell you why. If you have a highly sophisticated vendor, they can help you keep those test questions secure. If the question is secure, people can't cheat as easily, for example, and thus you can use the test for certain purposes. You can score it with a set of professionally trained scorers. If you don't have that kind of a vendor, you don't have that level of security. You can't score it on that level, and you can't thus use it for some purposes. But to Mr. Lee's question, we will have a test. It will have questions on it that will meet with what we've been doing for the last four years. It's just a question of, how do we deliver the test? We'll have much better information on that in two weeks, and I'm asking that you simply continue to be updated by us on this, and by the end of August, we'll have a clear direction on this.
Ms. Hill?
Let me ask you this. I'm not a contract expert, but we have to depend on the Division of Administration. I would like for them to come to the table and explain to me if that's possible for us to do that. Anyone here?
Ms. Smith, if I may, what you're suggesting is abandoning the laws that have been passed. That's part of the reason we're really here, is new standards were put in place, new laws were passed, and the question that you suggest is, what you suggested is that we ignore those and go back to the old test. That's kind of the essence of why we're here today.
I'm suggesting that we replenish the test bank, since both of y'all have said, you and the superintendent, that we have given out all the test questions to all the districts.
Ma'am, if I might, I'm going to state this very clearly. We have enough English and math questions, okay?
That's what I thought.
And the question is, when the BESI officers proposed to the administration that we be able to use current contracts to use some of those questions, the administration said no. Then, when BESI said, fine, we'll enter into a new contract, that was June 11, that was June 10, sorry, July 10. Then, July 16, when BESI said, fine, we'll enter into a new contract, provided we get to determine the types of questions on the test, the administration also said no. And so what I'm suggesting to you is, we're at a point where it's pretty obvious that there's a debate as to who gets to determine what question is on the test. I have just a suspicion, we're not going to resolve that in this motion here today. And it would be very helpful to me, as the administrator, for us just to get clarity on which vehicle we're allowed to use, and then we will deliver the test questions that we have. It's not a question of the test bank. We have enough questions in the test bank now. It's a question of how do we deliver it. And I'm asking you, and I appreciate you seeking clarity, to give us a couple of weeks to get some more clarity than we have now, and then we'll make a recommendation to you as to how we are going to deliver those test questions. But it's not a question of the test bank. We have the questions.
Ms. Hill?
I'd like to hear from Ruth Johnson, Deputy Commissioner for the Division of Administration. Let me provide some clarity around the contracts. The contract has been suspended. It has not been canceled, so it is still a viable option. The contract can be used to provide for transitional testing for the 1415 school year. So your motion is, in my opinion, completely in order, given that that has been the determination of the Division regarding the current contracts and how they can be used. The issue is, those contracts were for transitional testing, and so they cannot be expanded to cover something outside of transitional testing.
So, if I may ask, so the transitional tests that you referred to, or those items administered in 1314, what I think you're, I'm hearing you say, is that we could not go outside of that test bank to secure additional test items?
As long as the test is considered a transitional test, you can use those existing contracts for 1415.
Okay, okay. For 1415. Okay, and with that said, and I want you, as a board, to listen very carefully. I think Ms. Catherine pointed out that we are in a state of crisis, and that is so in the education arena. I was driving the other day, had my radio on, and in a central Louisiana school system, there were 90 teacher vacancies. Next door to St. Morton, there were like 50, 55 teacher vacancies, and that was just last week. In St. Morton Parish, we still, we continue to have teacher vacancies. They don't exist. Yesterday, the Louisiana Arc Teacher, Secondary Arc Teacher of the Year came in to say she was retiring. This is what this education reform in Louisiana is doing to our traditional public school systems. I mean, how do we have quality instruction in the classroom when we can't find teachers? I mean, we even, I'm seeking degreed people, and they don't even want to come into the profession because of this drama that we have created, and even at this level at BESI. So, I mean, we need to have a moratorium on testing. I also want to add, just last week, I went to see the documentary with Glenn Beck, We Shall Not Conform. What this documentary is advocating is choice, but also opting out. And many parents in Louisiana, I don't care which test is administered, they will elect to opt out because they do not, I mean, they're tired of this. You know, the pushback, they don't want Common Core standards, and I think they have legitimate reasons there, but we can't force this on parents. They're taking the choice options. They're doing homeschooling. And at the end of the day, are we sincere when we say we're improving the quality of education in Louisiana? No. We're damaging education, and our children will suffer. And look, remove the pride, whatever the reason, ego, what have you. We need to step back. We need to call the education experts, the educators in the classroom, have them come to the table. We have an opportunity to design test items or agree upon test items, agree upon standards. We are creating such a mess in education in Louisiana, and I just don't see, I just don't see things improving if we are unwilling to move forward with some answers, some responsible decisions, suing the governor, not willing to establish a moratorium on testing. I mean, you can administer tests, you can ascertain the information, the data, so why do you have to have, why do you have to hold students accountable, teachers accountable, schools accountable? We continue to create this chaos, this confusion, and teachers are walking away.
Members, if I may, obviously, the last month and a half has produced a lot of the confusion and turmoil that you're discussing. We have been an unfortunate war of words, where, as in the way that lawyers do their work, it comes down to, you know, what do specific words mean? And unfortunately, and I have great respect for Ms. Johnson, she uses the word transitional. BESI officers made a proposal to the governor two and a half, or two weeks ago, on July 10, to administer a blended test, a blended LEAP, that would use some new questions, some old questions, and the response was that the contracts cannot be used for testing in 1415. In fact, I'm looking at an article where, in the Advocate, where Commissioner Christie Nichols told reporters that neither of two state testing contracts provide for standardized testing during the 1415 school year. You see, members, this has been a moving target for my team and me. And I'm not asking you to agree with every policy position or anything else. I'm asking you, rather than throwing us back into another game about whether or not, what does transitional mean? What does blended mean? Let's ask for some clarity. I promise that we will have an answer as to the vehicle by which we are determining or delivering the test in August, and we're going to use questions that we already have. We've got access to questions in the item bank. We've been working on that, and we've secured that since our last meeting.
Members, we have a motion, and we have a second.
I never got the opportunity. I've been waiting.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I already recognized you, Ms. Hill.
Superintendent White, you made a statement that we cannot suspend all high-stake testing due to the federal regulations that we have to administer a test in regards to receiving federal funding. So, it is possible that we can suspend accountability system for the 2014, 2015 school years, school year, because, this is my concern, if we can't do that based on federal regulations, these districts, these schools, these students and educators are still held accountable. So we need to look in the process of figuring out if we can suspend the accountability system, so the districts won't be held accountable, our educators won't be held accountable, for a mess that we as adults are fighting, and it's not their fault. And so...
Well, I share your concerns, and it's important that whatever we bring back to you, come with accompanying accountability policy. And I know that Mr. Lee is a former superintendent, Ms. Smith is a former superintendent, understand this very much, that whatever the nature of the test is, it has an accountability result with it. Now, I need you to understand and appreciate this. The suspension of the test may have put accountability in jeopardy for next year, meaning also vouchers, also charter renewals, also course choice, you know, all of these different things that are tied to accountability. And so, I think we're going to have to have that discussion, too. But I just ask for a couple of weeks, let's get a little bit of clarity, and then we'll bring you a proposal, not as to the questions. We have questions in the item bank, but as to which vehicle we will use for distributing the test.
But what if the other parties say we want to appeal? There's a whole nother problem?
No, it's not. I'm, there's, no, no, wait a minute. There comes a certain point where we just have to say, no matter what happens in the courts, we've got to give teachers the go-ahead. Look, we have options at our disposal right now. I want to give you confidence in that, and let me tell you why. Since our last meeting, we filled our item bank. Secondly, we can deliver the test without a contract if we have to. It's difficult. It changes the nature, as some of you know, of the test. We might have to raise some accountability questions, as you say, Ms. Hill, but we'll be able to do it. I just want a couple more weeks to get clarity, a little, as much as we can, on some of the legal issues, and then to tell you what vehicle we're recommending we use to deliver the test questions. We have the test questions in the item bank. Of that, I'm not concerned.
Thank you. Members, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Boeck, I apologize.
That's okay. The only thing that I would say is, people have used different words to describe the situation, and I had the opportunity to visit a school district yesterday where there was a leadership meeting of the district leaders, the school leaders, and the teacher leaders. And I have to say, it was very encouraging, very exciting, that these people are very clear about what they will be teaching kids this year. There were not questions in the room about what it was that kids were supposed to learn and be able to do. Now, the educators, of course, would like to know what the assessment will be at the end of the year, but in terms of the start of the school year, this district is ready to go. So I think that we need to be very clear with our words, and also with the level of chaos, right? So just because this room is not a fun place to be, doesn't mean that districts and schools and classrooms will not be a great place for our kids to be.
Thank you. Members, we have one more comment card, then we're going to go to the vote. I will say that the issues you all have brought up are all legitimate issues, but they deal with not just a test. They deal with accountability, they deal with a number of things. And I believe, if I'm hearing the superintendent correctly, he's asking us to not take additional action now because it actually affects more than one item, and that if he can get clarity in the next few weeks, then he will be able to provide us a concrete plan to provide those assessments. Am I correct?
I would say, it's, even if we don't get clarity from the courts, we have an obligation to share with the school system how we will deliver the test. And there is, as Ms. Merle will probably say again, and as she said before, there's a very good possibility that we'll have no more clarity in two weeks than we have today. But there is a threshold question, and that is potentially, what contract vehicle are we using to deliver the questions? And here's why that's important. The contract determines issues like scoring, issues like security. That determines the nature of the test, and as Ms. Hill said, the nature of accountability, how much you can use it for accountability purposes. We're going to deliver the test questions in the item bank we have. It's just a question of how. Let's see if we can get a little more clarity in a couple of weeks. If we can't, then I'll come back to you, and I'll say, this is how we think we should do it for the schools. If we can, then we're all the better for it. But we don't need to make a hasty decision today about a contracting issue that we really can't address here today.
Members, I'm going to recognize one more speaker, and then I'm going to ask us to take a vote on a motion. Dr. Marini, before I recognize the speaker, I'll recognize you. Dr. Marini, if you would like to speak, I'll go ahead and recognize you now.
Okay. And if I'm out of order, please let me know. I know you will. If I would like to move to table this motion and to wait no longer than one month to make a determination regarding testing for 2014, 2015, would that be in line?
Is this a substitute motion we have now, or is this a, is this a reasonable? I think what you'd rather do is a substitute motion versus the motion that's in, versus the motion that's on the floor right now. So if you had a substitute motion on that, then that's what I would recommend that you do, and I would see that that's in order. So is that, would you like to make that a substitute motion?
Yes, of course.
Okay, and is there a second?
Second.
And there's a second?
What was her, I didn't hear. She's...
The motion is to, in no more than a month, say it again, Dr. Marini, I don't want to say it for you.
And I would like to do a substitute motion to wait no longer than one month to make a determination regarding testing for 2014, 2015.
Okay, there's a motion, and there's a second.
What was the second, please?
The second was, I believe, Ms. Bradford?
Yes. I think that is a very reasonable timeline, given the, this interplay of legal questions and us figuring out the vehicle. We have the question bank. We just need to figure out the vehicle.
Finally, members, I will recognize the last comment card. I don't want to dismiss...
I just, I want to make one clarification comment related to Mr. White reading the Advocate article. That is not an official communication from the commissioner. It is a story that the press reporter put together, cobbling together pieces of this debate and comments that are made by the parties. She specifically made that comment in the context of talking about new assessments, not transitional tests. So it is not correct to say that we have rejected all means of, for using these contracts for transitional tests. So I just want to make sure... So I just want to make sure that we're clear, that the Advocate article is not the commissioner's official communication, it's just an article in the newspaper.
And I believe you were sent a letter today seeking additional clarification from the superintendent, so that, that issue can be discussed, I'm assuming, during that meeting. I appreciate that. Stafford, Paul Mary.
Thank you, Stafford, Paul Mary, at the governor's office. I just want to, again, this word has been severely abused, but provide some clarity on what has and has not occurred, and some of the comments that have been made today. The first thing I want to say is that the law is not a moving target, and at no point have we refilled, or I should say, you refilled the test bank, the, the item test bank. When John talks about the test bank being refilled, he's talking about PARC questions, and the existing contract with D R C can be used to have a test for next year that would track the test that was used for last year. Should not be moving backwards, it would be keeping us where we are as we decide a legal way to move forward on what assessment is right for Louisiana. As one of the speakers today pointed out, we joined the PARC consortium as a state before there was a test, there's been no vetting process of that test, and we have not employed the procurement process for doing that vetting process, and that is what the procurement process is for, we talked about this at length at the last meeting. In regards to the communications between the superintendent and the governor, which have been very civil, and we've enjoyed, you know, working through this process and having those conversations, at no point has a blended test that tracks the 1314 test been put on the table as a option. The test, or as I understand it, in the communications and the, and the, and the letter that was sent by Bessie, and I believe John is now pulling out the letter and is going to correct me, but the letter offered to use the PARC questions in the D R C vehicle, and D R C does do several other functions besides develop test items. I think it is highly irresponsible to, to assert that there's going to be, or that the lawsuit, rather, is the fastest way to clarity in this issue. The lawsuit is the slowest way to clarity in this issue, the slowest way to giving teachers and students clarity about what the test is going to be for 1415. And that is just a fact. The legal system is not a fast system, and we owe it to the school system to have some clarity. And I think there's been many discussions about what the, the possible options are there and what the legal mechanisms are, and we just seek to have a, a legal way to have some clarity for what the test is going to be in 1415.
Appreciate your comments, and I'll only say that, you know, we've made several attempts, several attempts, all of which have been disregarded. And I don't want to get in a tit-for-tat and have us pull out what a document says and doesn't say. I think Ms. Mar, Dr. Marini's motion today provides a timeline that is a responsible timeline for us to take action. In the meanwhile, it's not been clear to us, and it's why we're here on what the position of the administration is regarding our ability to determine the content of the assessments. And that's the question, do we get to, do we get to determine the questions? And then how do we deliver them? And I don't think anything we're doing today prohibits additional conversation, but we do need to move forward. And so right now, we have a motion on the table and a second. Is there any further, there is an objection?
Object.
Three objections?
The substitute motion?
On the substitute motion, Dr. Beebe, Ms. Hill, and Ms. Smith, object. Any other objections? Hearing none, so move. Next item.
The next item is item 3.4, consideration of the Type II Charter for Milestone Thabis Academy of New Orleans, previously approved for renewal in December 2013.
For the record, I want to object to the 5.3...
3.3?
3.3, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have...
Yes, we've got that. I've got you...
That was a substitute motion, so you didn't go back to the main motion?
No.
The substitute takes the place of the main motion.
Okay.
Okay. So, item 3.4, superintendent, I don't know if you wanted to, or is someone in your staff is going to present it?
No, I would. Members, this is a school that we reauthorized in December, it has fallen on some difficult times along the following lines. Number one, it does not have a management organization affiliated with it at present, though it has been in negotiations to acquire one. Two, it just hired a principal into a vacancy. And three, there have been ongoing questions as to whether or not it would sustain its, its space in a space that's owned by the Jefferson Parish School Board. We have, there was, there was some thinking that because of these issues, there would be the need to consider, on an emergency basis, taking action with respect to the school. We have happily worked something out with the board of the school whereby we will be able to establish a memorandum of understanding with them, and they will agree that if the school does not meet the terms of the memorandum of understanding, that the school will voluntarily turn in its charter, and that they will have, however, months to do that so that they can meet the terms of their charters over that period of time. I think this is a better solution, and thus I'm asking that you defer on this item until August, when we can bring back to you the memorandum of understanding for your consideration. I apologize for the confusion, and I thank you for the time.
So if I understand correctly, you're asking now, actually, for a defer?
I'm asking for, I'm asking that there be a motion to defer.
I move.
There's a motion to defer, there is a second by Ms. Bradford. We do have comment cards, I know people travel to be here, it is a motion to defer, I'm assuming it's coming back to us at the next board meeting?
Yes.
I am going to recognize the comment cards quickly, if they wanted to speak now, they certainly could, but the motion on the table is to defer. Maureen Joseph? Tessa Jackson? Duane Hernandez? Mike Higgins? Candace Watzee? Lee Barrios? Thank you. So there's a motion to defer this item, there's a second, is there any objection? Hearing no objections, so move. That concludes our meeting. Thank you.